Okay, we will begin our first school year meeting at the 2324 school year with a report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Thank you very much. Good evening and thank you for joining us for our first Board of Education meeting of the 2324 school year. So I'd like to begin, I'd just like to give the board a little bit of a recap of my opening remarks from last week with the staff. You know, we really like to kick off the year and gather our collective focus for the school year. We do celebrate our new folks and introduce them all to the community. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the kinds of things that we focused on in advance of the presentation this evening because you'll hear a lot more about the work we did over the summer. And so at our board retreat, if you recall, we spent a lot of time going deeper into the RYE commitment. And that led me to do some summer research and really looking at the workforce and the needs of the workforce. And you hear all sorts of things, but there's some new reports that have come out that I thought would be particularly interesting to read, study, and try to glean some information to help us and guide us in what we're doing. So the World Economic Forum recently released the Future of Jobs Report in the spring. The OECD, the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, they recently released a report called Skills for 2030. McKinsey &amp; Company released a report defining the skills citizens will need in the future world of work. And Forbes magazine did a sort of summary of a lot of these different reports, and they called it the top 10 most in-demand skills for the next 10 years. And what I was attempting to do is to see if what we talk about in the RYE commitment, in what we're committing to our community, what we're committing to our schools, how off-track or on-track are we in that conversation? And so what did I learn? These are the skills that, based on these reports, and it was very confirming because critical thinking, emotional intelligence, flexibility, digital literacy, creativity, communication, collaboration, leadership, curiosity, and continuous lifelong learning. These were the top skills and dispositions that the workforce is saying they need. And what they're saying is that kids are coming out of universities without these skills. And so for us to be an organization that has been committed to developing critical thinkers who are socially responsible, who can collaborate and creatively solve problems, it was very confirming to see this information. And we always look at alignment. We look at alignment within our system and outside of the system. And so what do we think this all means? The world is changing, and graduates, and not necessarily, you know, what the workforce is saying, graduates who are entering the workforce. So that could be graduates from a high school, or could be graduates from university. They need a different set of skills. And the reports were quite damning of colleges and universities in that they were finding that they don't learn any of these skills at the collegiate level. But as I think about us, you know, the path that there was a clear path for a long time, and I know we've talked about it, for many of us when we went to school, it was pretty simple. You do well, you get good grades, you get a good SAT score, and you got into the right college or a decent college, you found a job, and you just, that path was clear. That certainty doesn't exist for our kids. So that path of good grades, high score on SAT, ACT, or AP exams, attending the right school, living in a community like RYE, those things do not ensure any kind of certainty. What we believe and what this research is now telling us is that those skills and dispositions that we have committed to for our community, critical thinking, collaboration, communication, and problem solving, we need to continue and even strengthen our emphasis on those skills because the workforce is telling us that that's what's needed. And if we go even beyond the workforce, when we think about the problems facing our society, most of those problems are highly complex that require people working across content areas, across disciplines, across industries, and they're very difficult to solve. And so it's going to take a workforce and a level of collaboration that we've not seen before. As the board knows, and I have talked about this at different events in the community, New York State has been reexamining what graduates need and how the New York State educational system should change in order to be equitable or more equitable and to best prepare kids for life beyond K-12. That's the Blue Ribbon Commission. And over the summer, I spent three days in Albany, wonderful time of year to be in Albany. And it was 64 people from across the state that are members of the Blue Ribbon Commission. And we focused on a wide range of areas, but this group has been meeting since last September. And the things that are coming down the pike that we're really being focused on during this three-day period and for the entire year, New York is going to have a portrait of a graduate. It's going to come out with a statement and say, a graduate from a New York State school, a New York State public school should be this, should have these skills, should be a critical thinker, should be a collaborator. And while I can't say definitively because the process is still going on, what those key attributes will be, the portrait of graduate is coming, and that's going to make a clear statement to communities, to the state, to universities, what to expect from graduates in our schools. There is a more interest in the notion of performance-based assessments, so assessments that require kids to complete tasks, do analytical thinking than ever before. The future of Regents exams is unclear. So right now, kids are required to pass five Regents exams, either four in high school and one in middle school, or some combination. But there is a likelihood that they may no longer be the single most important factor in obtaining a New York State high school diploma anymore. I do believe that it will probably still be an option. And I know we've talked a lot about here in RYE building out pathways that appeal to many different students within our system. I do believe that one of the strong possibilities is that we will see New York State start to recognize different pathways as acceptable for a high school diploma. So for example, having kids who follow a path where performance-based assessments are used instead of Regents exams through their entire career in school, that might be one pathway. IB might be another pathway. AP and the more advanced AP courses might be one of those pathways. And I suspect that this will begin to reveal itself in the coming months because the Blue Ribbon Commission's task was a report to the Board of Regents with recommendations by November. And just this week, we were sent a bunch of things that we had to respond to. So all of the members of the Commission, that was follow-up to work that we did over the summer, and we are allegedly going to be looking, and I believe if it's not next week, it's the week after, looking at a draft of the recommendation report that a steering committee, a smaller subgroup of the Commission, has been working on at our meeting. It's either next week or the following week. So that being said, you know, in talking to the faculty and staff, so it's everyone, it's all our custodians, it's all of our clerical staff, we all gather together. It is an incredible celebration to kick off the new year. One of the things that I began, and thanks to Gabby being able to help fund it, is I give a book every year to the staff. So you're not the only ones that get reading assignments from me. And this year's book was actually given to me by Anthony Fabrizio, who's an English teacher here at the high school, two years ago. And I read it, and it was a really impactful book. But as I was doing this research, and after coming back from the Blue Ribbon Commission time up in Albany, it really resonated with me, and it's a book that I wanted to share with everyone. So the book is called Range: Why Generalists Triumph in a Specialized World by David Epstein. And I can certainly send you copies. I know you're all reading the Jeff Salingo book right now. But it speaks to the need for critical thinkers. It identifies the skills through the author's analysis of research that are needed for today's complex, interconnected world that is rapidly changing. It talks about connecting new ideas and work across contexts, across domains. And it really asserts the need for a knowledge structure that's flexible. So it's very interesting because I now have more and more, every year I get book recommendations from staff members that, you know, is surprising. I think when you give people books, they start giving you books back. So this is one that now they have to read. Another one that quite a number of administrators are reading was from Rob Villanova, counselor here at the middle school, called Extreme Ownership. So if you want to understand that whole concept of Navy SEAL leadership, that's a great book that some of our administrators are reading. But so what I closed with was where do we go from here? We need to be very reflective of our practices, and we need to make modifications as necessary. We cannot stay where we are and do what we're comfortable with because we need, as a system, to shift gears when it's necessary to give our kids all of the tools they need for success beyond RYE. That's our job, is giving them those tools to be successful beyond RYE. We, as a system, need to be fully committed to upholding the RYE commitment. We need our kids to have every opportunity to become those critical thinkers, those collaborators, those effective communicators, those socially responsible, caring citizens, and those creative problem solvers. And I ended with this. This is not easy. Developing the RYE commitment wasn't easy. Reflecting on your own practices and doing things differently than you may have been doing for five years, or 10 years, or 20 years, or 30 years is not easy at all. It's really hard. It's really hard. But we have the infrastructure and the support to make those shifts, and it's our responsibility to do that. So based on the comments that I've received from our staff as I've visited classrooms and talked with people, and now I have a whole lot more books that I need to read, I think the message was pretty clear. And I think people believe, people get it. They understand what our mission is and what we need to do. So I'm really excited for that work, and you're going to hear some of that. I actually get to be an observer tonight when Tricia, Gabby, Brian, and Erin share the incredible work that's happened here over the summer. So it was really energizing first day for me. And I didn't end up with COVID at the end of it like last year. So it was very exciting. But so I'm just going to shift to my more traditional report.
Can I ask one question on that first? So I mean, agree with everything you said on the skill set and those being skills to succeed always, and even more so now. The thing I was thinking about, though, when listening, is I think the one skill we haven't talked about is interact, if you have those skills, and then you have to interact in situations with people who don't have those skills, what's the skill for dealing with that? And I don't know if that's come up in any of the books or educational things or something like that. I feel like that's the one thing we haven't necessarily talked about. If everyone developed all these skills, the world would be a great, easy place. But we all know, there are a few people out there who don't have them all.
I think it comes up, and not so directly, but indirectly, in the notion of flexibility and the notion of emotional intelligence. Because you never know who you're going to have to work with. But collaboration, and so if we do a good job in helping kids learn how to collaborate, then kids have collaborated with lots of different kinds of learners and people in their experiences in the schools, from their early days in kindergarten when they have a reading buddy, to when they're doing, you know, pretty significant engineering projects in their seventh grade technology class, or they're doing, you know, they're collaborating as part of the newspaper. So I think it's indirectly in those places, but I think it's a really interesting point. I mean, I think that one of the things that I think about is, in this really divided world that we live in, it's that notion of civics and people being able to work with people who have different views and opinions as opposed to what we're doing in Washington, in our political world, where people just can't even collaborate across ideologies. So I think that's a big piece of work that we need to do. And I actually think one of the things that's really exciting, and I know it's not included because it's something that the board got an email a couple weeks ago from the League of Women Voters about a civics program. And you put them in touch with Tricia. And Tricia's been talking with, it is a really exciting opportunity for some of our kids. And the notion that there are places like the League of Women Voters that are committed to civics education and kids being able to collaborate and partner, even if they have different values and opinions on things, is really exciting. So we'll have more to share about that as we move forward. But that was a really exciting thing to hear about. I absolutely agree with you, Tom. I think it's an important piece to think about.
Just to kind of piggyback, the work around social and emotional learning really does kind of get to a lot of figuring out how to work and how to regulate your own emotions and learn to interact with people who you don't necessarily share common values or share common beliefs. And so I think that's another piece that's, you know, happening at the same time, right along the same train tracks.
The emotional intelligence was one of the four that was in every one of those reports.
I would imagine that's, sorry, I would imagine that is really, that is where you intersect with RCEL, is that emotional intelligence piece. It's just different language, but it's the same concept.
Absolutely, yeah.
Which has been around, you know, that notion of emotional intelligence, like IQ or EQ or whatever, there was this, I remember it became a very prominent movement within the corporate world several years ago. And I think that still is obviously something that's being nurtured within the workforce today. And so if kids can come into it with some more of that, it clearly is an advantage for them.
Yep, absolutely. Okay. All right. So just the first day of school, Tuesday, September 6th, it was hot and humid, but dry. And our kids were in relatively cool classrooms throughout the district. Some air conditioning units working a little harder, but as the board knows, it's something we've been strategically working on. So kudos to Gabby and the Facilities Department in getting air conditioning across the district. And all of the HVAC work as part of the capital project has been very helpful. If you had missed it, we welcomed News 12. They reached out. They're wanting to cover opening day of school. They came here to the high school. They were here talking to two of our seniors as they arrived at school, Maddie Walsh and Henry.
Paul.
Henry Paul, yep. So they greeted News 12. They did an interview. Suzanne and I were interviewed. Congressman from the 16th, Jamal Bowman, was greeting students. And over at Midland, Sean and George and Robin Latimer were greeting students with Tricia. And Jane was pressing the flesh, shaking hands and kissing babies with Shelley Mayer.
I don't know if I kissed a baby on Tuesday, Wednesday.
I think he may have pet a few dogs, but over at Milton, where Shelley Mayer was. So it's been a great start. And, you know, being back in classrooms with our kids and teachers and seeing, I mean, yesterday I was at Osborne's arrival, and when the bell rang and the kids came tearing across the field to get into the school, that's really a great sight to see. So by the time we have our next meeting, four out of five back-to-school nights will be in the books. Midland, Milton, and Osborne are all taking place on September 20th. RYE Middle School is September 21st. RYE High School is a little later, on the 28th. And all of our back-to-school nights, all of our back-to-school nights are in-person this year.
Woo!
Now, I fully expect some grumbling when parents experience what in-person back-to-school night is like in this building. I know for sure there's one person at this table that has experienced it in-person. And Chris, I don't know if you want to give a clue as to what it's like. We're the first time through.
It's a great time. Everyone should do it. It's absolutely fantastic. It moves very quickly, and you learn your way around very fast.
And we often have people in strategic locations helping to direct families to where they need to go.
Yeah, it's great.
So there's one visible vestige of COVID remains, and it's the mountain of test kits that have been provided by New York State. I got an email last week, and I asked Tracy to place an order for the September allocation. And even though she's in a walking boot, a certain somebody came running down the hallway and said, "You cannot, we cannot take any more of these tests. We have 30,000 of them at 324 Midland." So we have lots of kits available in the schools. If you're interested in testing for COVID, the District Central Administration Building, take as many as you want. Don't be shy. You want a case? We'll give you the full case. Yeah? I'm sure if you ask, Gabby would deliver them to you as well. But, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Well, thank you. I had the great fortune to be in the room, Dr. Byrne, when you delivered your opening speech to the staff. And it truly was a great moment and a great way to send off and to kick off the year for the staff and the community. And I'm really glad that you were able to share it with us all tonight because I think it is just such a great way to show the connection and the intentionality of the work that the district does towards the future for all of our kids. So thank you so much for that. So we will now move on to the other intentionality and work of the district with our summer recap presentation. Dr. Byrne, please.
So I'm actually going to pass this over to my colleagues to the right. There is so much good stuff that went on here over the summer. And we felt, you know, hearing about the work in facilities and food service and curriculum and professional learning and our extended school year, and even the work in HR. So I think, Tricia, you're kicking this one off?
And just a quick RYE commitment statement here. Hopefully you'll, oh, thank you. Hopefully you'll see from all the work that we did across curriculum, special education, budget and operations, and human resources, that it really is strongly connected to the RYE commitment. And we kind of keep that going all year long to make us even stronger for the coming school year. So I'll just start by talking about the in-service courses and workshops that we held over the summer. In the area of literacy, the first in-service course that we held was called Patterns of Power, and that's based on a book entitled Patterns of Power. We started a cohort last year, and so now we started our second cohort. It's really the study of grammar instruction. It gives you a really simple way of how to incorporate just 10 minutes of grammar every day across five days, looking at a specific skill. And the teachers really responded positively to it. And so they kicked off our second cohort. They met over the summer to learn the kind of the series of lessons, and then they'll meet throughout the year and do some intervisitations and keep their learning going. And then the second literacy course that occurred was on our K-2 writing units. These are new units that are coming into play for this school year. Last year we rolled out our K-2 reading units, and we use the reading and writing units of study. And the big shift for these units is the emphasis on phonics, encoding, grammar, editing. And so it is pretty significant. And so we really need teachers to fully understand that shift, how it's going to impact classroom instruction. So we started out this summer looking at that with our literacy coach led that work. Then throughout the year, it'll be supported in a few different ways. One with our literacy coach will continue to work with teachers on it. And we also are partnering with an organization that's now called Advancing Literacy Initiative at Teachers College. This is what has been, it was transitioned from the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project. And what's really helpful about working with them right now is that it allows us to tailor and customize the type of professional learning that will really best fit our teachers' needs and our students' needs. And then in addition to that, we'll also be partnering with the Haskins Lab to continue our work on phonics, and we'll take a look at how that will play into our new writing units. And then in the area of math, where we continued a course called Building Thinking Classrooms, which might look familiar to you. We ran that last year, and that's also based off of a text, Building Thinking Classrooms. And highly successful last year. It really focuses on problem solving, the types of tasks that you offer to students, getting kids to show their work on vertical surfaces. So if you were to walk in a math classroom, you're highly likely to see whiteboards up and students work on them, just so that the teacher can assess and students can see each other's work, and they can talk about it as a class. So just like one example of a strategy that's coming out of that text. We installed some more Promethean boards this summer, and so we ran a technology workshop on how to use those. And those workshops will continue this fall as well, in addition to the Google Workspace Tech and Service Course we also offered this summer. And then I guess under the category of like good instructional strategies, we had a couple different in-service courses that highlighted those across all content areas. One was called Next Level Classroom Instruction. It's also connected to the Building Thinking Classrooms text, but instead of just focusing on math, it goes into all subjects because really good problem-solving techniques you can apply across all content areas. So that was really successful. There is also another one called From Purpose to Practice, which allowed teachers to reflect on their own educational philosophies and then connected those to instructional strategies. We held our second Social Emotional Learning Institute. It took place right at the beginning of the summer, that last week in June. There were about 40 teachers that learned along with us for two days. Yes, it, you know, part of it focused on kind of restorative practices for teachers, but mostly it was really on tools and strategies that teachers can use with their students. And they left those two days with a commitment on specific things that they wanted to bring to their students. And so they're in kind of study groups for the year to check in on how that work is going. So in addition to courses, we also had our administrators did some learning this summer as well. We held our admin retreat. And our focus with our faculty this year is to continue our work on critical thinking. There are a lot of different subtopics that I would say we touched on last year because it's such a complex topic. But this year, we're really diving more deeply into four different subtopics: feedback and critique, questioning and discussion techniques, bias and perspective, and reflection and metacognition. And so teachers will get the chance to, or the choice, to study one of those, whichever one they want to learn more about. So at our admin retreat, our administrators collaboratively designed those sessions for teachers. You can see in the images there, we did, we used vertical spaces. We were designing on the walls, trying not to ruin the wallpaper. And it was such a, it really was a wonderful collaborative process. They gave each other feedback. They revised. But by the end of that retreat, they left with a solid plan and excited about launching it with teachers. So we also had some fun. We participated in a team-building activity. And then our operations group talked about operations and technology and security, and they also had a theme around communication and our communication systems across the district.
And I think we had to do some critical thinking and use dance to show our learning.
This is right. There was some dancing, because there's, you know, what's a retreat without dancing? We'll save that video for later, maybe.
I kind of did.
We held a department coordinator retreat this summer. This was a day-long retreat in August. Very similar work to the admin retreat. They planned critical thinking sessions for their departments and the teachers in their departments. And you can see in that image, we used our new middle school iLab for the session, and it just worked beautifully. We were able to come together. We were able to come together. And then, when they had to go off in their groups and plan, we had the space to do so. So, a successful day. And we just met with them again yesterday, and they feel confident about their plans for the year. We had our last retreat, the Academy Retreat, held across two days. And the primary work for that group was that, you know, as you are aware, our academy is interdisciplinary into humanities and STEM. But the teachers really wanted to look for places to bring those two areas together to make it even more interdisciplinary. So, they spent time mapping out their curriculum, looking to see where some possible connections are, and started to revise and plan some units. The second day, they also welcomed their students. So, they had a barbecue with all of the academy students. And it was a really great way to kind of set a positive tone for the year. Brian and I hosted our new teacher orientation at the end of the summer. We welcomed about 25 new faculty members. We held many different learning sessions. We talked to them about critical thinking, the Rye commitment. They learned about the technology in our district, special education. You can see there's Dr. Allm there with his human resources group, giving them a little talk. And then, we ended with a fun activity. They had to do a scavenger hunt around the community.
So, the scavenger hunt came about as a COVID modification. Because for many years, and this exists in a lot of school districts, there's a bus tour of the school district. And we could not do the bus tour for a couple of years. So, we put together, and Brian organized, this is the third one, right? The third scavenger hunt. So, they learn all about Rye by running around, competing against each other. As you know, we're kind of competitive around here. And they have to take photos in different places. So, where did you, Playland? Did they have to go to Jerry's?
They have to get a menu from Jerry's.
They had to get photos with people. Like Colleen was in a ton of photos. The Rye commitment, all over the place.
Yeah, it was a good time, definitely. Good revision, I guess. And then Erin's going to talk a bit about Extended School Year.
So, Extended School Year is the program that we provide for our students with disabilities. So, it's a six-week program for students to prevent substantial regression. So, it was, as it always is, a fabulous six weeks this year. Special thanks to both Gabby Pruchio and Tracy Barnett, who always helped to make our end-of-year field day a really big celebration. So, the kids make tie-dyed shirts. We have the partnership with the Rye Police and the Fire Department come as well. We have our Blue Path Dogs that we work with throughout the year also came for the day. As you can see, the kids really loved it this year. We really went above me on, we got the ice cream truck to go. And they even talked, Gabby is getting them a bouncy house. So, all of these things work on all of their goals, you know, whether it be around, you know, PTOT. But it's all, and it's nice to have that collaboration. The kids really like it. And a special thank you to, this year it was held at Midland. And so, special thanks to the custodial staff that was very flexible and accommodating to all of our needs, as they always are. And then, also, after this program, because this is only a half-a-day program, our partnership with Rye Rec. So, last year, we partnered with them. And our students now have the opportunity to come to this program, which is required for them. And then, they also have the opportunity to participate in the Rye Rec Summer Program. But it is with the partnership with our staff that goes over to support the kids. So, they still have the same opportunities that all the other kids in the community have, which they hadn't had in the past. So, that has been wonderful to see and has been really a great partnership. So, it was nice that I was at Midland because then they just had to walk over, and they could also participate in that.
We had a few different curriculum projects happening over the summer. We had grades six through eight science units. We're continuing to be written. These are based on the next-generation science standards. World Language III, we wrapped that up and put, built the final units around that course. We began designing the new earth science for middle school and high school that, again, based on those next-generation science standards, those are starting to roll up into our high school-level courses. We wrote American Sign Language VI, revised and updated our Global I and II at the high school, as well as our economics course. And we also wrote the Physics and Precalc course for the academy for our juniors. And so, those courses, the revised ones and the new courses, you would see on our curriculum maps online.
Okay, so it was a very busy summer in the Office of Human Resources and Leadership. We hired 29 teachers overall, just from the RTA unit. So, not even talking about custodians, aides, assistants, clerical folks. 29 new hires in the teaching unit. Most leave replacements, of course, not many, not all of those are probationary positions. But a very, very busy summer for hiring. And one of the things that we're always trying to do is innovate in our recruitment strategies. And what I've been telling folks is that with this ASL opening, I have never in my career cast such a wide net to try to fill that. So, we, there was no stone unturned whatsoever. And in doing so and in facing that challenge, it really forced us to consider, you know, alternate ways of finding and engaging with educators. To offset the so-called teacher shortage, the new strategy is to build internal capacity in positions or areas, you know, hard to fill openings, right? Or areas where there are very few certified teachers in those areas out there. And these strategies are becoming increasingly grant-funded. So, for instance, both NICE and Department of Northern Westchester's, there's a state grant for the special ed extension. And so, we had a few of our teachers pursue that this summer completely free of charge. And so, really, the strategy is now encouraging our own educators that are known commodities and known to be skillful and well-respected, nudging them well before we have these really hard-to-fill vacancies and providing them the means to get these certifications that are challenging for us. Another major accomplishment of the summer is finishing all the RTA contract edits to reflect the MOA that was signed in their new contract. And we will be going to press very soon on that. The other thing I want to highlight is this, we've always working to become more efficient in the hiring process overall. The biggest thing is to be first, you know? Unfortunately, we are competing with every other district in this immediate region, and you cannot afford any additional seconds. You need to be first in line, and you need to get to the talent before anybody else. So, a big goal of the summer was to kind of find inefficiencies where we can, or even just expedite our process. So, an example of that is rolling screenings. The traditional approach would be to put a posting out there, let it marinate for its posting period, and then begin to comb through the pile. We can't afford to do that any longer. So, as they come in, we're constantly screening them. And in a lot of cases, when we see talent, we might have already set up a hiring process timeline and planned a specific day for interviews. But when we see someone in there, we'll jump on it immediately and have them come in right away. So, another strategy is partnering with other districts that we know have a similar opening, especially if it's hard to find. So, depending upon the timing, we had a case this summer where someone was ahead of us in the timing of their opening. And I was able to call that district and say, "Okay, who were your runners-up?" And to be perfectly blunt, what happened was, they said to me, you know, "Our runner-up was this one." But it's actually our first choice, but we couldn't afford them, right? And so, that could potentially, a scenario like that really work out for us. So, partnering with other districts. Another strategy for these efficiencies, and I talked about less delays, it's important to have a very rigorous, multi-step hiring process, from the screening to a committee interview to a demonstration lesson to a final interview with central office. And so, what we're doing now is we're combining those steps. So, it's no less rigorous. But it could be that someone that we're inviting to come to our school will do a committee interview and a demo lesson on the same day, so that it isn't spread out as much and there is no time wasted in between these steps. So, in the area of leadership, you know, I've been working closely with the high school leadership team, team-building activities, but particularly working styles and communication styles. So, I've led a few different, you know, half-day sessions with those folks. And, you know, they're really starting to continue to gel as a team. Similarly, we have a lot of ongoing workshops with the leadership team. We're revisiting this topic of effective change management, as you know from all of Tricia's presentations. You know, we have a lot going on in the district, and it's not easy to lead change. So, you know, I'm always helping the group reflect on the change process and, you know, consider different ways and strategies in academic research and in practically speaking, how to move things along. This didn't happen over the summer, but I think it was worth of mentioning is implicit and unconscious bias in the workplace and the hiring process. I led a workshop with our leadership team on that. And then, whenever opportunity I have, I revisit that with them. And another, and the last point is something that's very important, is that we have, you know, an extensive evaluation and observation process that I think that you're pretty well aware of, that, you know, several years back was very prescribed to us by the state. And so, the missing link of that, in my humble opinion, is aligning that process to our professional learning priorities and goals. So, we did some work as a leadership team this summer to do just that, align that process more with what we're doing with our professional learning and our goals that are embedded in the Rye commitment.
Excuse me, Business and Operations. So, the business office, although the new school year starts in September, our new fiscal year starts in July. And we get started right away with our tax collection process every year. As it stands today, we've collected approximately 44.58 million of the 91.7 million outstanding for the warrant that supports this year's budget and initiatives. We also work at, as soon as our doors close, to close out the old year, open up the new year. Our auditors come in. And this is all work as we move forward in creating that audit report that we will review with this group in a couple of weeks in anticipation of the financial package that is due from every public school in New York up to the state by October 15th. So, we are working feverishly to put all of that together and get that up on time. You will all be receiving notifications from the state reminding you to remind us that these reports are due.
They remind me every day.
Again, if you all remember, last year, the State Controller's Office sent their team of auditors down. We actually started that process back in January. It continues. We keep going back and forth with them. We did have a couple of calls over the summer for clarifying information regarding the field work that they've done. We hope to come to a close soon on that with a report that we can share. And then, again, we would be responsible for doing a corrective action plan for any of the items that may be called out. And also, that will end up having to go up to the state within a prescribed time once that final report is issued to the district.
Gab, just one, it looks like the tax collection is really on target considering
Yes.
that's the first half that.
Yes, it's a good sign as to where we expect it to be at this point.
Great, thank you.
Facilities. So, we did not have any major construction in our buildings related to the bond initiative that we started back in 2019. However, we were very busy. We actually opened our doors for the first time since construction started to our neighboring groups that we offer our schools to over the summer. So, Rye Y and Rye Rec came back into the buildings, as they typically do over the summer, occupying space. Here at the high school, we hosted our seniors, and they were here playing Bridge Bingo. I think there were a couple of other games that were going on.
I did Canasta as well.
Yep.
I didn't see any mahjong. Bridge and Canasta for sure.
Rye Rec also occupies Midland School for their camp. And the Rye Y occupies Osborne School. I bring that to your attention because our buildings are very busy over the summer. And God bless our custodians, but they work extremely hard to, you know, go through our buildings with a fine-tooth comb, do a lot of work related to just getting our buildings and maintaining our buildings so that we are ready for opening day in September, and it comes quickly. Some of the initiatives that we worked on this summer is we, I can come to the board and finally say that we are classroom carpet-free throughout the entire district. There is not one classroom left that has carpet in it. Additionally, we've installed LVT flooring throughout the district. So, we are going in and replacing a lot of flooring that looks exactly like in this room. This flooring is a perfect example of a labor-intensive waxing that is required every year of stripping and waxing these floors. That takes a lot of our custodial time. By replacing it with the LVT, we eliminate the waxing process. So, that's our next initiative as we go through our summers, is to try and remove as much of this flooring as possible and replacing it with the LVT. By eliminating the need for waxing, it gives our custodians and it frees them up to do things we've never done before on a regular basis. And that's paint hallways, paint classrooms, and spend time just really freshening up the building. And I can honestly say, our buildings look amazing. And we are so fortunate to have our custodial staff doing that. Another thing we're doing is honing our terrazzo floors, another labor-intensive floor material that is gorgeous. You want to maintain it. But by not having to strip and wax those floors and instead doing this honing, a polishing process, it actually frees up the custodians from being able to do more waxing as far as that goes. An area that we did tackle this year is the middle school sixth-grade hallway. It required some fire separation in the hallway, and that gave us an opportunity to redo some lighting, pull down some old paneling, and really just, it's a beautiful space. There's a landing there that we've now put benches in for kids to be able to hang out in. It's just a really, the building just looks amazing.
You'll get to see it all soon on the board tour.
However, there was some, we're obviously constantly looking at construction. So, we're still in the midst of Phase II construction closeout. There's, you know, everybody's experienced construction in their own homes. It's those minor details, those final finishing touches that we continue to work through with our contractors to get those projects completely closed. In addition, our design and development team is working on Phase III construction. We continue to move forward with that as we did a presentation at the end of last year talking about where we were and the next steps in construction. At this time, we are on track for being able to do work at Midland and Osborne in terms of the new additions. And we are prepared to tackle the high school iLab, the high school/middle school media center, and the Performing Arts Center refresh, as we called it when we last got together.
And that's next spring, summer?
So, summer, beginning in spring of '24, because we're in '25.
This, yes.
Well, that's why when you said next spring, I thought, well, that's '25. But it's this spring.
So, it would be spring of '24 going into fall of '24. Yep. All of our custodians had the opportunity to attend chemical cleaning, procedure training. So, we're moving away from the whole waxing, but we really are looking at green products that we use, multipurpose products that we can use throughout our buildings for cleaning. We have dispensers in all of our buildings, teaching them how to mix our chemicals properly, what is the best use for glass versus cleaning tabletops versus cleaning our bathrooms, and really giving our custodians an opportunity for some professional development as well as these new products come on the market. There were a lot of bad things around COVID, but there were actually opportunities to just engage and understand about the different products that are out there that we could use that would really be efficient and help our folks keep our buildings clean. And then, we started the new school year with one open custodial position here at the high school. So, Rob, myself, the head custodians are working hand-in-hand. myself, the head custodians are working, um, hand in hand as Brian feeds us our, you know, candidates to, that I think we will be able to come to the board shortly with, um, the person who we believe should assume that role. Food service. So Chef Nicole has joined our team. She's here in the high school cafeteria. She is this little thing, but God, can she cook. So hopefully you'll hear from your kids that, um, Chef Nicole has just brought to us just a whole new life in the, uh, high school cafeteria. So we're really excited about her partnering with Esteban and the rest of the group in there to see what they're going to create for us. Um, and in doing so, we are looking at expanding our breakfast options. We want to create a bagel bar, and we've premiered avocado toast for the first time this year.
How did we go this long without avocado?
I don't...
And that's the real question, right? It is a, a win-win. The avocado toast is outstanding.
I'm sure it is.
And Stacy has worked really hard to, um, get our food distributors to, um, really work with our local, um, farms to give us as much local produce as we possibly can get our hands on. Fall is a rich time of year to be able to highlight these items, and you will see that on our menus throughout the fall as we, um, move through the school year and highlighting what those, um, local produce are. From all kinds of berries we've been getting in, kale is coming, squash is coming, so, yep, it'll be there. Um, so be on the lookout. Eat your greens. Health services. So, um, I just want to give a shout out to Tracy and the nurses. They are here all summer long, whether it's supporting our programs, um, that are running in our schools, or, um, you know, doing all those sports clearances to get ready for, um, our fall season, which actually starts mid-August as our kids are getting ready. And just to give you a sense of what that looks like, they cleared over eight hundred and fifty students, um, to be able to play sports going into, um, the end of summer. So thank you to them. Network and infrastructure and security. So I changed it up a little bit. Um, we used to be called IT, but then that gets a little confusing because Caitlin runs around with multiple hats, so I'm just identifying the portion that really belongs under, um, business and operations, um, which is really maintaining our network and infrastructure. Thank you. Um, Midland PA, um, so Midland and Milton are joining Osborne in terms of our PA upgrades. This is really that, um, overlaying software that we have been able to do at all three elementary schools. It's the big knot and bow that ties together, um, all of our security systems to talk to each other and work together, um, from calling nine-one-one to initiating a lockdown to closing all of, to locking all of our doors. Um, so that's been a huge initiative as we move forward with doing that. Um, although it's slow, more of our Salto locks, which are the locks that we've been installing throughout the district. I'm looking for my card access, um, which is really just helping us move forward. And again, it's one of those pieces that will tie all of this packaging together. Um, from a security standpoint, we are, we rolled out, um, electronic student IDs, although cards are still available for any student that would like it, but it is a new system that we're using at the high school, middle school for our students. We have two new faces joining our high school security team, um, top-notch. I can't be happier, and we've just added some more talent to the group that we've already had. Um, from a infrastructure and network perspective, we started, which is going to be a multi-year project, of rewiring the high school, middle school. It's a monster of a building, so we're taking it in phases, making sure that, um, we are up and running every September. It would be too much to take on in one felt swoop, so we're doing it in pieces, and we anticipate, um, I'm, we anticipate being completely done within the next three years. I know that sounds crazy. Yep?
So is that to get them to that same PA upgrade?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. That is our goal. Yep. Um, behind the scenes, the IT team has done work restructuring and organizing our IP addresses. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it really is. It, it has organized us. It allows for troubleshooting. It has really just ramped up our security, and this is all in anticipation of, as we talked about, um, doing a cybersecurity audit. So we've engaged with Redpoint. They'll be coming in to do a cybersecurity audit for us. This was something that was born out of the audit committee, which is on the business office side, and we punted to the technology committee to say, um, please take a look at this. And we interviewed a couple of vendors. Um, Redpoint really stood out for us, um, and we look forward to doing that. That, too, I anticipate what will come out of that is really partnering with, um, Redpoint going forward. Um, once the security audit is complete, really using their services beyond that, too, because it's going to be one of those things similar to when you buy a car and you drive it off the lot. The minute you're out of the gate, you kind of have to go back and reinvent and reevaluate. So Redpoint, um, will, I imagine, be partnering with us, because we will be taking the cybersecurity audit in phases as well to make sure that we're not missing anything. And then finally, um, our second annual twelve-month Employee Olympics. I cannot tell you how grateful I am to all of the folks that are here all year long, helping us out. And it's really an opportunity, I don't know even why I'm getting all choked up. I'm so sorry. Um, but it really, we couldn't do it without each and every one of these people. So to have a day to just kind of say thank you, and it's actually turning out to be a lot of fun.
Supersoaker soccer is quite, quite something. So beach balls, supersoakers, and you're trying to play soccer with that. It's, it's a lot of fun, and kudos to Gabby and her team for putting that together, and that's some of it. Brian was the host and MC.
Well, I have to say, I had my surgery, so I couldn't really do what I was hoping, and thank you to Brian, Michelle, and everybody else who jumped in to give a hand to just make it go off.
And thanks to Detective Caputo, who is Gabby's escort that day, driving her around in the golf cart, to be a part of the day.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
So it, it, it has been, um, uh, you know, an incredibly productive, busy summer. Um, I always laugh when people say, oh, so you take the summer off and do nothing, and I, I look at this group to my right, and, you know, these folks and, and all those folks on that final slide are busier than ever during the summer. But, you know, the, the things that we're able to accomplish, I'm really proud of, and really proud of the, the thinking and the planning and the good work leading, uh, these efforts, but then the execution. So, thank you.
Can I ask a quick follow-on or going-back question? Um, I didn't want to interrupt you, Trishak, so can I go back to your part of the presentation really quickly? Two questions. Um, first of all, thank you for everything. When I sit here in September, I'm always amazed at the amount of work that goes on in the summer, so it, to see it here, it's just, as Eric said, it's outs, you know, it's unbelievable how much gets done. So thank you so much. Um, just to clarify, the earth science, um, when you were talking about the curriculum instruction, that will not be rolled out this year?
No.
Are we anticipating rolling it out next school year?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to clarify that. And then, can you just, um, talk a little bit more about the, I think it was the in-service summer program about the grammar piece? Is that more just generally, I think you said ten minutes of how to incorporate more grammar into a classroom, or is it specific grammar to specific grades, if that makes sense?
There's a scope and sequence included in the book and the patterns of power book, so you know which grammar skills belong to which grades. And then, it's, essentially it's a curriculum, and then you work your way through that, focusing on one skill per week. And so you do different activities with that skill for about ten minutes a day throughout the week.
Okay. And what grades is that for?
It's for K-five.
K through five?
Yes.
Okay. Do we, have we looked at grammar, middle school and high school as well? Just curious.
Um, not in that way.
Okay.
We've looked at it and sort of embedding it in instruction. That, that's much more explicit, which is where you want your grammar instruction to be.
Okay.
Um, well, what we need to do next is to look at how to expand this beyond those two cohorts. So we're really putting that in every classroom.
That's going to be my question, and how to integrate it so that it carries
Correct.
Through to the, to the middle school, because I know that, based on my kids, they've had very different experiences with their grammar, I feel like. So it's nice to have a, a nice foundation, it sounds like, that will start in elementary school, and then that will carry through.
Right, that's the goal. But they can kind of, kind of get to more complex things in terms of grammar once they get to middle school, but we have to get those foundations in the lower grades.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
And can you talk about participation this summer for teachers? Just how that, you know, obviously, COVID, things were changing, and just, are we back to kind of where we were before COVID, or how, what is the...
We are about, we're at about a hundred, a hundred and forty-six participants over this summer. Um, before, maybe we're a little bit higher than that, like on the one hundred, one-eighty maybe. Um, but it's, it's about this, it's about the same.
And I, I would say one of the things that, you know, as the board is aware, you know, the, the presence of our instructional coaches allows us to do so much professional learning in classrooms during the year that's ongoing. You know, five or six years ago, when we started and brought on one coach, and then we brought in a second coach, everything was happening over the summer with consultants. We didn't have this opportunity for people working side-by-side and partnering all throughout the year. So, um, that's been really impactful as well. So it's not just, there's a lot of places where all the professional learning happens during the summer and on those conference days, and that's really it. And here, as you heard from the, uh, presentation, the faculty meetings, the departmental meetings and departmental work, the summer work, the staff developers, instructional coaches, working with people all throughout the year, and, and critically important is that alignment in all of that work, which is really powerful.
No other questions?
Fantastic. Huge. Every year, I, yeah, what you said, it's amazing to see the, the scope and scale of everything that goes on over the summer. It's perfect.
And I think that, just the, the collaboration, you know, you talked about the academy going back and doing their work and looking at, you know, how much further interdisciplinary they can go, and I think that's what the district does, and you all do at Central Office, is how much further every summer can you all collaborate together and have consistency across the district, which is really not easy work and creates great results. So thank you so much for all of that. All right. So we will move on to the hearing of the public on non-agenda items. There is no one here, so I will not read my statement, even though, even, I was contemplating.
I was waiting, I was waiting.
I was contemplating, but there is no one here, so I will not read it this evening. But please know that we do have an opportunity in our meetings every other Tuesday for hearing of the public, if you show, so choose to come. So with that, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Chris Repetto, seconded by Tom Stein. Let's take a look at the consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional. Consent agenda classified. Consent agenda pupil personnel services and special education. Consent agenda curriculum instruction and assessment. Okay. Seeing no questions, can I, let's take a vote to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? That is seven nothing on this evening's consent agenda. We are happy to, uh, accept a gift from the Midland PTO in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to support cultural enrichment, which takes place both in school and on our field trips. The Midland PTO also has given a gift of ten thousand dollars, which will go to support teacher grants for classroom experiences. Uh, in addition, we have our agreement with Edgitech, which will continue to support the district's IT needs, as Ms. Peruccio was great in highlighting for us with the summer recap. We also have an agreement with the Friends of the Ry Nature Center, which will work to support our environmental science programs, and we are very fortunate to have a local partner so close by, which can support our students in their environmental science endeavors. We also have an agreement with the Ry Youth Council to provide tier-two student support during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, which goes to work and helps support our students in their social and emotional learning. And that is that. So, uh, there is no presentation and discussion. Number two, do we have any communication to and from the board? We haven't had any meetings yet, but they're a-coming. Oh, pedestrian?
It's, I have a meeting, we have a meeting this Thursday, um, but I did just want to take this chance to thank Dr. Byrne for the updates over the summer and the collaboration once you got information on the Midland, the Midland County roadwork that's going to be happening, and, um, kicking off the meeting with your team and the city, um, and the communication to traffic and pedestrian safety. So we do have Brian Dempsey, who's on the county board, you know, who is well aware of the situation now. We had a great communication come out today from Mr. Boylan to the Midland community. So just appreciate all the, you know, communication and collaboration on that point. And it's, for anybody who hasn't heard about it, it's going to be a difficult, um, you know, unknown on Midland Road in front of the school, really, it seems like for the next eight months, possibly. But just appreciate all the work.
And those orange cones are all along, you know, toward Clayland Park.
A lot of orange vests out there in the morning and cones. So, um, obviously, we, you know, there was a lot of work to try and make it, you know, make the work timed better, and we weren't able to do that, but the communication does help, and, um, so just appreciate that. And anything, you know, TPS can do to support you, just keep, keep us in the loop, and we're happy to.
It was a tough meeting for the contractors and the county, uh, when they met up with all of us from the district and the city with a very strong united front about how we needed to be really thoughtful and careful and communicate well because of the pedestrian safety and, and all the kids and families coming to the school every day. Um, so kudos to the, I know the city commissioner, Kopi, and, um, town, uh, city administrator, Usri, they've been really helpful in this process as well.
I just have a quick shout-out to Rob Gimigaliano. On the, the topic of pedestrian safety, I had a parent reach out. Um, they resurfaced Forest Avenue, but the, the crosswalk hadn't been repainted right at Apewamis, and, uh, a mom reached out and said, what can we do? And I pointed her to Rob, and he got back to her within minutes and connected with the city within minutes, and it was done by Friday. He said this, said he had it on his list, but I have a feeling he may have pushed it up. So just a huge, huge thank you to his responsiveness and getting stuff done.
Okay, great. So our next board meeting will be on Tuesday, September twenty-six, where we will review the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Board of Education Goals. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Chris Repetto, your first-last motion.
My first-last motion?
Oh, my gosh.
She's going to count down all the way.
I am, it's going, all year. Um, seconded by Kelsey Johnson. All those in favor? That's seven-nothing. Have a wonderful evening.